All right, let's stand for the pledge.
Our gratitude extends to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, as we come together as a county commission, we ask your guidance today, especially for the nation in our times of need, that leaders of the nation, our state, and us as county commissioners, grant us wisdom and help as we go about the decisions in the county today, Lord. We also ask for moisture. It's been several months and it's very critical out there in this region, Lord. Please, please, grant us some moisture for this region. And all these things we ask in your name, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Good morning, all. You in Facebook land and those in attendance. We welcome your participation and your attention to these matters that come in front of the county. It's good to know that we are being watched and observed and we appreciate the following of county affairs. On the consent agenda, any comments, questions, fellas?
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon and I would move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Cliffrey, second. All those in favor of the approved motion, please say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Public comment. We have a few people in the room, not too many. Anybody in this room have something not on our agenda that they would like to comment about? If not on the agenda, okay.
Well, COVID-19 is at the bottom of the agenda, but many of us have patients that we need to go see. So we can either submit the comments in the uniform, sign, or reiterate them now.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
They have to go see patients, so I think they should speak now.
Yeah, please do.
Do you want me to speak into those microphones?
Yes.
Yeah, you just took them down.
Hello, I'm Gretchen Dunford. I'm a surgeon at the hospital. Nice to meet you. The Community Outreach Committee at St. Catherine Hospital asked Centura Corporate for guidance on our increasing number of COVID-19 cases and community spread. Our local committee decided last Monday to begin to acquire masks to distribute to the community members. While many of my colleagues from across the nation have been sending me masks, we pitched our idea to Centura Corporate and they helped us to acquire resources, including 25,000 masks and 2,000 bottles of hand sanitizer. We began distribution of these items on Saturday and it was well received. As by Sunday evening, we had distributed around 6,000 masks. While we continue to determine how to distribute them to the most people, we are asking you, our community leaders, support our endeavors by helping us to educate community members on the importance of wearing face coverings, if not prohibited, otherwise by their own disease process, and by leading by example if you are able. As elected officials, it is very clear that you have a passion for serving your neighbors selflessly. And what better way than to protect all of your constituents to the best of your ability? Thank you very much. And I have masks here for you to take if you would like.
Please do. We have one more from the audience?
We have two more.
Oh, do one.
Will you be my guinea pig?
Figure what, ma'am?
Guinea pig.
Let me have a couple. I do this every morning, get hold of this.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Marilyn Douglas and I'm a nurse practitioner here in the clinic, or in Grow Well Clinic. Thank you for this opportunity. And what I wanted to speak to you about is the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm calling this unpredictable, covert, and cryptic. Let me tell you my story. I'm helping out Dr. Burns as the provider for the shelter that's housing the COVID-positive patients. So far, we have seen six patients in that clinic, or in that shelter. Two people of those six have been admitted to the hospital. Three of them have been discharged and one is still there today. My job has been to follow up by telephone on a daily basis to these patients. We have a survey of questions that I ask them. We managed to have the shelter obtain an oxygen monitor and doing temperature checks on a daily basis on those patients. And so, what's your oxygen?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, good job. So the normal oxygen saturation for patients is anywhere between 94 and above, okay? 94 to 100. When there is some trouble, we've used EMS to come and assess these patients. On two occasions, we have had patients with oxygen levels of 70. And I would tell you that it is concerning, but the first thing you think of is, well, the monitor's not working right. And so you check it. And so this is one of these situations that I wanted to tell you about. A couple, an elderly couple was sheltered at home by the county health department. A family member who lives in Arizona had called the health department and asked for someone to check on the couple because no one was doing a, no one had medical knowledge about what was going on. They did buy a monitor and they put it on the, I'm gonna call her Mrs. X, and they got a number of 74. And so then they said, well, it must not be working. So the health nurse asked me to call these people. So I called them at home on Friday and talked to Mrs. X. She was able to converse just like you and I. She did have some cough and fatigue. Through the telephone, I thought she was doing okay. Saturday, I tried to call her again and she ended up turning her phone off, which was worrisome for me. So I finally decided to go to their home and ask what's going on. I called the daughter in Arizona and got their address and went to their house. The husband answered the door and he was quiet, kind of hunched over, not very talkative, and led me downstairs. Mrs. X was laying on the couch, gray, and just breathing shallowy. I put the oxygen monitor on her finger and it said 51. And I did the same thing. I went, this must not be working. So I reapplied it and guess what? That was correct. The point that I'm trying to make is that this disease is cryptic and covert. It fools you. It fooled me. To finish out the story, we called EMS and Mrs. X was evaluated by EMS. They got the same 50% oxygen saturation rate, took her to the hospital, and I'm happy to say that she is in the ICU and still hanging in there. Yesterday, the husband called me back and asked me to come and check on him again. Again, these people don't understand this illness. We are barely understanding this illness. So when I went to assess him yesterday, his oxygen level was 92, which is a little concerning. And he had just a little bit of dyspnea. So probably not sick enough to go to the hospital, but my plan is to call his provider today and see if he can be assessed. So what I want to tell you is that this disease deserves your respect and it deserves all the support that we can give it. It fooled me and it has fooled others. So be respectful of how contagious it is. So the other part of this story is that there are granddaughters in the house who are trying to look after their grandma and grandpa, but they didn't see the illness either. And they haven't been tested yet because they thought they had to be sick before they could be tested. So we are gonna get them tested today. So it's the contagiousness and the infectiousness of this disease and its mortality. You know, we don't understand how sick people get with this. So we've been talking to Dr. Burns and we want to do more to help educate our public, our community, about the spread of COVID. We want to continue providing masks. I'm excited that the hospital is working on that. Promote hand washing and provide more opportunities to assess patients. There's a disconnect. Once we find positive patients, we put them in a shelter, an isolation situation, and they don't know what to do. And they don't know how sick they have to be before they can get help. So I ask for your respect and support as we work on the health of our communities in Finney County and make it the top priority. So Dave, if you can imagine if you saw 70 on there, how you would feel. So it's kind of scary.
Yeah, it is.
All right, thank you.
You want to use that?
I've brought some. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi there, I'm Dr. Rachel Swanney. I'm a family medicine physician at Plaza Medical Center here in town. And I also am here to talk to you guys a little bit about COVID-19. And I was hoping to give a couple examples of my own experiences of patients with COVID-19, as well as some from colleagues of mine who are not able to be here this morning. And I hope you'll recognize that we've got three medical professionals here from three different clinical settings here in town, trying to explain to you guys the importance and the gravity of this disease on our community today. And so the first example I was hoping to give you is, as you all are well aware, COVID-19 has become really fairly widespread within our community at this point. Something that I think kind of portrays that well is a scenario in which a family who was positive for COVID-19 was reaching out and saying that they did not have anyone to get groceries or medication for them while they were quarantined at home, despite the fact that they have a widespread network of friends and community members that they know. And the reason they were not able to get these things is because everyone they know in town, within their community, was already positive or quarantined with someone who is positive. And so I think that's a pretty grave example of how hard-hit some areas of our community are already becoming. So that's the first example. And that was from this past week. The second example I have comes from a colleague of mine who works over in Kearney County. Kearney County has actually been kind enough to reach out and help our community and do some pop-up testing sites within a couple of the apartment complexes here in town that house a lot of refugees. In the past two weeks, they have done three different pop-up testing sites. The first testing site that they did, the results are all back from those. They were able to test 20 individuals on that day. Fifteen of those came back positive. An additional three people, they suspect are false negative results because they have classic COVID-19 symptoms and live in a household in which someone else was positive, for a likely positive rate of 18 out of 20. The math is pretty simple on that. That's 90%. Even if you say, gosh, I don't want to count those three that were likely false negative, that's still 15 out of 20 people who were truly positive, which is 75%. That's outrageously high. And so I think that's another example of how hard-hit certain areas of our community are currently. The second two testing pop-up clinics that they have done, the results are not fully back for those yet. The third and final example that I'll give to you is similar to the example that Marilyn Douglas already presented. And it's a story of how severe COVID-19 can be and how covert and cryptic it can be. And this is a scenario in which another medical provider colleague of mine encountered a patient who was COVID-positive, who did not realize how severe her symptoms were. This was a chance encounter. It was not a clinical setting. And I would say it was very lucky that the patient happened to be in contact with this person. Her symptoms were severe enough that she required hospitalization shortly after the provider friend of mine encountered her. I think this speaks to a couple things. One, as Marilyn said, this illness is challenging for medical providers and also for patients. It's, it can be very hard for patients to recognize how sick they are. And they can go from having mild symptoms to severe symptoms very quickly. Second, her case is not isolated. There's many cases out there like this. And she was lucky that she happened to encounter a medical person who could recognize that she needed extra help. But that was a chance encounter. So I think what this speaks to is that our healthcare system is ramping up to care for all these people. Our hospital has made all kinds of changes in order to prepare for a surge in patients. And so far, I think is doing okay with the patient load. Our health department has set up a testing site and is, which is an incredible thing to do the work that they've been doing so quickly. But COVID-19 presents challenges to our healthcare community that we can't always anticipate in advance and we need time to meet those challenges. And with that, what I would say is Finney County has a very high rate of increase of COVID cases currently, enough to the point that we actually made national news last week. We're one of the top 10 emerging hotspots in the United States. That's not a top 10 list that I think any of us wanted to be on, but I think it speaks to the fact that we need to be doing what we can to continue to slow this rate of increase so that we can continue to handle these cases as a medical community. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Good to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further from the audience in the room. Okay, we have a few for our clerk to read that came in and addressed the commission.
The first is a question from Jeff Mader. Since when is disregarding medical advice a good thing? The next one comes from Chad Knight. Commissioners, I have been told local authorities precede state regulations. If this is true, you can choose to open up business and release some restrictions. It is known that your immune system is strengthened through workout. At the YMCA, we believe cleaning and sanitizing to be a top priority and have implemented a 13-page reopening playbook with some strict guidelines and policies. Please explain why local businesses can't make their own decisions on restrictions and open up. The pool chemicals allow the virus not to be transmitted and steam room will kill the virus as well. Not a doctor or mad scientist, but everything I have researched, read, and asked other people's, other pool gurus about this. I apologize. We plan cleaning every 90 minutes. All your big bucks companies are not. That is where this disease grows, although it has been here since last November. Be a frontrunner, make a difference, and allow Finney County to open up. Allow citizens to make their own choice. I encourage you to see what Sweden did. Put common back into common sense. Thank you for your time and dedication to serving Finney County.
Thank you. Mike respond to the first sentence of his view. I have been told authorities precede state regulations. That's not entirely true. We cannot override the governor. We can make them stronger, but we can't make them less than what the governor has put it toward. Further comments on any of the observations we've received, fellas?
Just, yeah, Dr. Clifford here. Dr. Swanney, oh, she did leave, unfortunately, but I know, Stevenson, we do have other tools that we haven't used yet. Are we suggesting maybe quarantining neighborhoods? I know that was done in Gallup, New Mexico, but maybe when Steve, Mr. Green, when you get up here as emergency manager, I just, I know that may be draconian, but you know, what we're hearing from Dr. Swanney is just proliferation of the virus within certain communities. I would like you to consider or address that when you come up later, Steve. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to business and then we'll come back to the COVID-19 when we hit to that part of our agenda. Business items. Lana, are you online so that you can visit with us about the CDVG Emergency Loan Fund?
I am here, gentlemen. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly, thank you.
All right, good morning. So you do have three applications that have met the 51% low to moderate income requirement, another Look Salon and Spa for $7,000, Classy Looks for $4,000, and Crazy House, Inc., RSA Distribution for $35,000. The, as a reminder, you guys set these up to be three-year terms at a half a percent interest. The first year of the payments are interest only. Before these loans, your balance is approximately $336,000. And these should be repaid within the three years if the businesses meet the obligations of the loan. And if you approve these, the remaining balance available would be around $290,000.
Good, thank you, Lana.
I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Knight, I recommend we accept alternative fund for approval of these loan disbursements.
Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion on this motion for approving the three businesses.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon and I don't have any concerns about these loans. Mine is just a question, Lana. When this, when these, and this is just to clarify for the public and so forth, but when these funds came to us, and you addressed this partially or maybe you addressed it totally, but I think we need to clarify. When the funds came to us, the city was allocated, sometimes the city regarded city for within the corporate city limits. And then our funds that would be used here were for the other parts of Finney County, including Holcombe. And I thought that there was some clarification that had to be made before we could authorize funds within the city limits. Am I misunderstanding something? Did we get that clarification? Just help me and those who are watching understand.
You didn't misunderstand anything. No, I, we did get approval. Kansas Department of Commerce worked with their legal counsel and they did authorize us to use the county funds for businesses located within the corporate limits of the city. I had forwarded that information to Mr. Reese a couple of weeks ago when we got that authority.
So, and I'm looking across the table here to Robert. So we do have that in writing in our records so that if somebody ever came back and questioned that, because that was not the original authorization, we were covered, okay?
Correct.
Is that, is that okay?
Correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the loans to these three businesses, as stated in the motion, please, if you have a standing aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. All right.
Thank you.
Lana, thank you very much. John, are you on the line for our local safety plan?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Do you have anything to add to your report? Do you want to give a quick outline for the public who have not seen this report?
The local road safety plan is something that we, the commission approved a while back, I think around December, at a December meeting, which is for a committee or a group of KDOT consultant, KDOT, local public works and law enforcement and others to get together and look at locations that could be improved by, through a safety plan. Not committing us to do any projects necessarily, but giving us some ideas and prioritizing locations and ideas on how to do that, improve them fairly economically. Also, they're putting, KDOT is putting the deal over our head. If we don't have a local road safety plan, we won't be able to receive high-risk real roads and some other safety grant fund in the future. So this is our agreement with KDOT to go ahead and have them work and get their agreement with the consultant and begin the, the study.
John, it's my understanding that the county pays 10%, the state pays the balance. Is that right?
Yes, sir. It's about, I think the agreement there says about somewhere around $50, $280.
All right, gentlemen, questions? Larry?
Question, Johns, this, I don't know if this is important for this action item, but you know, about a year ago, we talked about a lighted stop sign at Third, the bypass, Third Street and the bypass for, and we're having trouble with KDOT getting this accepted, which is strictly a safety issue. Can this be tied into this or not?
I think it could possibly be. I do, I haven't heard, and I haven't checked in with KDOT, local KDOT yet, but they had, Ron Hall had said they did make that request to Topeka. I just hadn't heard anything back or nor have I really asked him.
Okay, well, that was six or seven months ago.
Yes, sir.
I'll bring your memory to us.
Yeah, John, we just appreciate follow-up on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, at this stage, speaking, I'll offer a motion to accept this proposal and our expense of $5,200.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon. I'd second that motion.
Okay, further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, John, anything else for us? Any updates or anything like that? Any updates or anything like that you wanted to take the opportunity for?
You might be aware, KDOT's project on Highway 83 south of town, this week they'll be closing the west side of TB Road, the TB Road, to start building shoe fly for the project when they come in and tie in the new lanes with the existing lanes. That's about right there to TB Road, so they'll have TB closed here for a couple of weeks, it looks like.
Any update you might have for us on 156, how far west they're going to go with that, or? Do you know? Is it stopping at 28th Highway, or they're coming all the way to Garden?
No, I, I do not know. I can look that up, but I don't know how far they're coming west.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I had that, this is Lana, I had that same question asked of me just this morning.
The governor presented a plan over the weekend, or saw the Eisenhower Project, I think they called it, but I noticed that we was, we're going to get some additional money for 83, and they didn't say much about. Well, it did say 156 from Jetport to Sandston was going to be at shoulders, so. We're on the list somewhere.
We're on the list. Thanks, John. Dory, election 2020 update, if you would.
All right. So I did include in today's agenda some information for the 2020 election that I wanted to share with you. I wanted to remind everybody about the dates. So the dates for the primary election are August 4. June 1 at noon, we have both the candidate filing deadline as well as a party change deadline. So anyone who wants to file for you, the offices that are up for election, those offices are on our Facebook page and also on our website. As far as the party change deadline on June 1, that is party changes. So if somebody is unaffiliated currently, they can remain unaffiliated up until election day and choose to affiliate with a party at either, at any time in order to vote in the primary election. However, if you are Democrat, or Republican, or Libertarian, and wish to change your party, that must be done by June 1 at noon. So very important to remember, because the party you are is what you will be voting, that's the ballot you'll get in August. So it's very important to make sure that your party is correct. The second deadline matters July 14. That's our registration deadline. So anybody who is not currently registered to vote, or anybody who needs to update their name or address on their voter record, needs to do that by July 14. On July 15, we'll be sending out mail ballots. We are currently accepting applications for advanced ballot by mail. Those forms and links are available on our website. If you have any questions, or if people, your constituents have questions, we'd be happy to help them get those filled out and turned in. So we've taken in quite a few, and we know that may be important to some with all the COVID stuff going on, so. On July 16, we will start in-person advanced voting that will take place here in this building from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM weekdays, and then we will schedule probably a couple of evenings and one Saturday where people can come in and vote early. Again, we think that that may be important to people, just to avoid the congestion of polling locations. And then on July 28, that would be the deadline to submit your applications for an advanced ballot by mail. So and that just, that deadline is because we need time to get the ballot in the mail to you and have time to get it back by the deadline so that your ballot will be counted. So I want to share that information with you so you can share with your constituents, and as you talk within the community, I think it's important that people understand these dates. We've been pushing that out on our Facebook page. It's also on our website. So we encourage you to, to share that. This file here, the candidate filing deadline for June 1, this is a list of all of the offices that are up for election this fall. Again, candidate filing typically requires that you, if the application is attested by the county election official, so you will need to, if anybody's filing for office, they will need to call our office and make an appointment, or show up, show up front, give us a call. We'll come open the door and let them in so we can take care of their paperwork and get them filed.
Excellent.
The next one is about voter registration, so again, just trying to remember those deadlines for party changes, residential name changes. And then again, we encourage everybody to apply for ballot by mail. So do you guys have any questions about any of the election dates, deadlines?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't have a question. I just have a comment.
Sure.
That if you get to talk to any voters, please remind them to fill out their census, too.
Absolutely.
Because we are in dire need of accurate census.
Yeah.
Right now, it looks to me like our reporting's not very good.
Yeah, and even for things like, I know that COVID supplies were dispersed based on population, which I believe would come from the census, so it's important for a lot of different things.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lana, just a question. Is this handout that you just went through with us, is it going to be posted, or is it posted? On the website, I haven't checked.
It's included right now in today's agenda, which can be found on our website. It will also be posted on our website, and we'll share a link to that on our webpage. We're just, we're still working on the Spanish version of it before we put it out on the website itself, but it is in the agenda for purposes for today.
Well, I just think it's a great piece to have on the website, especially that last page applying for ballot by on the website, and that phone number, and that kind of stuff. So I, yeah, I appreciate what you're doing, and this is a great piece with all the dates and so forth.
Thank you. We also, this morning, I believe on Facebook, it was scheduled anyway to be posted. We created kind of the timeline for people that just kind of pinpoints each of those dates as we go through the next few months. So that's been posted to our website today, but this presentation will be available.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just putting my Republican Party Chair hat on for a second. I'd like to point out that that June 1 date is two weeks from today.
Absolutely.
To emphasize that, so it's coming up. They were the holiday interspersed. And we, on the Republican side, have a number of precinct positions for committee women and committee men that are open, so if folks are interested, I'd like them to reach out and contact me. Thanks for that public service opportunity.
And I did reach out to both the Dr. Clifford and Cynthia Marsh, the Democratic Party Chair, just to share with them information about the upcoming deadlines, and who else filed for their individual party precinct positions.
Thank you.
And you have all chose filed already, or?
I can.
Okay.
Would you like to hear a list?
Yes.
I'm going to go off the memory, so I don't have it right in front of me. Do you want to know for precinct people?
Oh, not exactly. No, just for the.
Just for the main offices? So we had, what offices? For Fannie County Sheriff?
Do you want the list? I have it on my phone here.
Fantastic.
Or I can just show it to Larry, or you can just read it.
For Fannie County Sheriff, it's Kevin Vasque and Jerry Quint. Register of Deeds, we have Bonda Finley and Corey Smith. For Fannie County Treasurer, Trista Joyce. And I don't, I don't have all of them for Township Trustee and Treasurer. And we did have a late filing on Friday for Commission. Nick Dahl, Blaine Dries, and then also Dave Jones.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Further questions to Dory before we move on? All right. Next on my agenda, Mr. Green has a, Mr. assigned the topic of the resolution. Morning, Steve.
Good morning. How are you guys today? Good?
Good.
These are gold, so get them while you can. They're hard to come by. We're gonna, a couple of months ago, we initiated a 60-day declaration to the state, and our time's come, so we need to re-up that. So we're going to submit that to you for approval, and we'll submit that through KDEM. And basically what that does, it provides us some opportunity to do some cost recovery for not just us in the county, but our various public sectors, city, and hospital, things of that nature. So basically, it's a formality, but, you know, we need to drive that through. So once you guys approve that, we'll send that up to Flagpole and get it to the state Capitol.
Does this, did we do this earlier, 68's ago?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we did, back in 19th of March.
Mr. Chairman, this Dave with a question, Steve, is this, if this is renewed, does it have an expiration of 60 days, or is it until we take, take action to cause it to stop?
Yeah, there was some discussion with that, with KDOM, the state, and they, technically, we don't have to do this, but they recommended to do this because the information shared with us is it kind of puts us towards the top of the list for cost recovery. Because those counties that actually initiated this are going to get the opportunity to apply and submit their paperwork for reimbursement. And of course, that won't be 100%, but it could potentially be 70%. And that's really just a guesstimation at this juncture, but there's some opportunity there to offset some of our, our costs.
It helps, and so I don't want to stop our discussion or asking questions, but I'll, at this point, offer a motion to, to renew that declaration for the additional 60 days.
Thank you.
This is the other Jones. I'll second.
The other Jones. All right. Let's continue with discussion now. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity to the public, this doesn't commit us to any particular lockdown strategy or stay-at-home orders or anything. This is just for purposes of cost recovery.
Yes, sir. Strictly cost recovery through FEMA, and it's just one of the steps we have to go through. There's, there's nothing beyond that.
Yeah, I think we understand that at this table, but I will make sure in the public.
Yes, sir.
The two, and I don't want to create a stampede. Lana?
Well, mine, mine is clarification, too, Mr. Chairman. First of all, how this fits with the state's declaration of emergency, because I think the governor renewed ours as well, if I'm not mistaken, to clarify that. But secondly, I was thinking, I read something from one of the federal, one of our federal representatives, that we didn't necessarily have to extend the emergency order in order to get that reimbursement. Did I read that incorrectly? I thought I read that last week.
No, that is correct. As stated previously, the state did recommend that we resubmit this and reapply, because there was some bervage that puts us towards the top of the list for cost recovery. So that's really the initiative behind it. But we are covered through that umbrella of the state and the governor's declaration. But, you know, obviously, without being too redundant, if we get an opportunity to be first in, get those costs replenished, that would be our preference.
Yeah. Like I said, mine is for clarification, not necessarily opposition.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Dave speaking, a point of clarification. The state's declaration may expire before this, Fannie County, before it expires, but this, the one thing that this offers that Stephen has not mentioned is the coverage, if you will, the protection for those emergent volunteers that may be called upon by either emergency management or the health department, whoever, they suddenly come under the guise of some protection that's not offered if we're not under this declared state of emergency. So it's, it's good protection. Makes good sense.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the resolution, as stated, please respond by voting aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir.
I want to address, it seems a little draconian to close neighborhoods, but I thought that's where some of our healthcare advice was headed this morning. I didn't get to ask them before they left.
Sure.
Has that been contemplated to discount?
You know, we haven't gone to that, that depth to discuss that for particular sectioning off individual subdivisions and whatnot. Our posture now is we had really, we'd like to reemphasize our sheltering capabilities. We've projected that message out there to the public, and we haven't had a whole lot of inquiries about that. But, you know, we'd prefer to, to go that avenue, because it's more of a controlled environment. We can provide some medical intervention. As Marilyn spoke earlier, she's our expert to go in and do patient assessment and make recommendations and whatnot, to keep an eye on those guys. And so that's kind of how we're doing that right now. That's our preference to do that, because we can provide meal support, we provide laundry service, and things of that nature, of course, well checks, as stated. That's certainly a contingency we can look at down the road, because there has been some discussion to demobilize the sheltering through the state, because it's not really being utilized to the degree that was anticipated, so.
Quite a.
Just one, one second. So we're kind of moving into this, we need to get into the Fannie County Board of Health to continue discussions on that.
Okay.
May I?
At recess, as the county commission in one session, it's the Fannie County Board of Public Health.
Dave, you're all second.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Any, now, you want to continue on with comments on?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and, you know, that's certainly a contingency we can look at doing. We'd really have to engage a lot of the vested parties to come up with that. That's going to be somewhat more, it's going to present some challenges to manage some of that as far as the food support. What we're doing now to, you know, support those families that are sheltering in places, we're initiating our United Way, and they're providing some volunteer support. So if we went to that degree, to actually section off, you know, areas of the city, subdivisions of that nature, we'd really have to sit down and come up with a good business plan for that, how to support that. Without being too redundant, our preference right now, since we have the opportunity to shelter people and manage all those, those daily requirements, that would be our preference to drive that and re-initiate and get that message introduced to the public. And we can certainly kind of figure out a way to do that and kind of advertise that service that's out there.
Looking at the numbers that Mr. Douglas gave us, they're not really being utilized. Is it, people don't know about it, do you believe, or?
You know, it's really not being utilized to a, to a very large degree. I think it's somewhat intimidating, because when you go into isolation, you're expected to stay there from 10 days to two weeks. You're in a hotel room. You know, but I think that's, we've had people call and inquire about that, and once we give them the details, they kind of, some shy away from it. Obviously, the ones that are, and I hate to use the word more conscientious, but are more sensitive to their family environment, maybe that's a better way to say it, are taking, are showing some initiative and taking advantage of it. And then, of course, some of our, our sheltered individuals, as Marilyn was stating, have been, they've been pretty sick. And it provides an avenue to maintain those well checks on a daily basis. And so that's, that's really one of the advantages, but, you know, I don't, we've put it out on Facebook. We've put it out several times on a couple of different sites, our EM side and our health department side, but.
Well, there's a problem here, because I'm not on Facebook, and I'm sure there's a bunch of people that are.
There you go. Yeah, and so, you know, we can look for other opportunities to disseminate that message. Again, it's optional. Our secondary shelter is, is the American Inn, and as for somebody that's maybe in an environment, their living arrangements, and they need to get away from that environment, they're not necessarily positive. So again, all those same services are provided, you know, laundry service, meal support, and then our meals are made through the community college. So we've had probably more people inquire about that than the isolation shelter. But, you know, we're open for suggestions to get that message out there.
Another question. Now, what are the numbers? How many are in the sleep-in, how many of those are in the American Inn?
Okay. Right now, we have. Right now, we have seven.
I don't need the names, no.
Yeah, we did last time.
Locations. Locations.
Or public. There's not names of any of them.
No, I don't, I just want the numbers, head count.
Okay, at our isolation facility, we have one right now. And that's, I just got a phone call, and that's gonna, that's another individual that's headed there, that I shared that information with Marilyn already. We have two that were transported via EMS to the hospital, and we anticipate those two coming back. The maximum we've had at one time, and correct me, Marilyn, if I'm wrong, is, I believe, six. Our non-positive shelter, we've had as many as 11 there.
Okay. What, so I guess my question would be, for the general public, go again, run over again, what are the requirements to get into these two facilities?
Okay, so if you're tested positive, you're given a package through our health department and Colleen's group. And in that package, there's a contact number, my number, and Anthony Cruz, our deputy director's number. And if that individual chooses or sees the need to get away from their living environment, because they don't want to expose family members, they can contact us, we'll coordinate the arrangements for them to come stay at the sleep-in, if they're positive. Now, if you have somebody that's like, there's multiple families living together, and maybe a family needs to get away, because there are several positives that maybe aren't symptomatic, that choose not to come to sleep-in, we provide a secondary service at the American Inn for those that are not positive. They don't, the isolation parameters aren't quite as strict, they can kind of come and go, you know, as they please, but we're still providing those services, the food, laundry, things of that nature. Each of our facilities has a shelter manager from the division of family and child through the state. We have some National Guard guys on site, wearing civilian clothes, just to provide some services, security, things of that nature.
Well, it is amazing that the number of positives we've had in this county, and less than 30 people total, taking advantage of this opportunity.
And maybe there's some opportunity for us to really project that message out there, you know, we've just missed that, and, you know, we're certainly open to look at that and do some research and, you know, get it out there.
Well, I think it's safe to say from our medical people that commented earlier, there's a lot of questions out there on communication, on what they should be looking for. You would think with all the national publicity and everything, that questions would be answered, but obviously, they're not, it's not getting to some of these people. I don't know the answer to that, but information.
Mr. Chairman, and to let you know, my time has been cut back, because one of my questions was one that Commissioner Mario Jones just asked, so. This is Lon for those on the line. My second question, though, is, or not a question, my second comment, though, is with regard to getting the word out, because I agree with our chairman, people aren't looking at Facebook as much as we think they are. We have a board advisory going on in our subdivision, while not, it's not affecting our specific subdivision, but to one sound of us, people in that subdivision don't know there's board advisory going on, and it's been out there through different electronic means. My suggestion, and simply a suggestion, is we go into those communities, those subdivisions, with some paper, and put it on their door, put it on, or find out who the key person is in that particular community, give that person some communication, so that they can distribute it within that community. And it kind of piggybacks to what Dr. Clifford was asking about isolating a community. To me, the better solution is going into that community with some written communication, or verbally sitting down with that key person and saying, these facilities are available. So I think we need to do some feet-on-the-ground kind of communication, not just strictly electronic communication, is my suggestion.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, and maybe we can engage some of our police SO departments to disseminate that information, maybe, you know, give some flyers to EMS as well. Just to tack on to what you mentioned about that one subdivision, we've actually multipurposed one of our shelters for a family from that subdivision, because they didn't have the proper avenues to maintain hygiene, so we allowed them to come into the American Inn as well. So, you know, we're looking for opportunities to help the public. But, you know, yeah, we can certainly look at that and disseminate that message.
Thank you.
Well, you go first. I'm gonna forget, I agree with Lon, and I wasn't suggesting coordinating neighborhoods, something I would be in favor of, but I just think if we're going to control this spread, everything's on the table, but I think Chief Feud has had excellent rapport with certain of our communities, and I think with Lon, that would be a great outreach, because I do think there may be a lack of trust, or some misunderstanding about what that sheltering means, certainly not imprisonment, but it could be read that way, if you're used to living somewhere where the government takes you away, you may not show up again. So I do think Lon's suggestion is very good, well.
My only comment would be, I think you need to work really close with the major employers, HR departments, so, you know, Dwayne and I got to tour one last week, and it was amazing what they do, and the steps they go through for their employees, that I think they'd be a great asset.
That's a great advice, yeah.
I think it goes beyond just the two shelters that we mentioned, like the clinical staff said, a lot of examples were given where they go to homes, and they don't really realize how sick they are. I don't know if that's, it's still a public perception thing that needs to be changed, that when you're sick, look for help.
And you know, I think as our physician said, you're not always symptomatic, you know, a lot of the young people that are test positive, and I'm sure Marilyn and Colleen can address that, they don't present themselves as being totally symptomatic. And it, you know, somewhat manageable from their perception, even though it is contagious. So, you know, getting that message out there, and it's a challenge, you know, it really is, so.
And I do appreciate that, and like I said, mine is, just trying to throw out some answers.
No, we certainly look into all those things, and we appreciate it.
All right, Colleen, are you willing to step up to Steve's place and continue on with the discussion on where we are today, based on last week's results?
Sure.
Good morning. Good morning.
I'm sorry.
You only have to go ahead and do those graphs.
Sure. So to speak to the non-congregate, or the congregate and non-congregate housing deal, we do communicate when we do the investigations and contact tracing with positives on their ability to isolate or quarantine in their own home, and do offer the non-congregate housing as well. So we do communicate that with positive cases, and maybe to kind of speak to why it may not be as widely utilized as we expected, we are seeing several positives within a home, so a family may already be positive before, it may already spread within that home before realizing that we have positives. And so that might also be part of what's going on as well.
Is all of that in printed version, Colleen? From my own perspective, when I go to a doctor, half the time I'll remember what he told me. So if you, is that all printed, that this option is available, that handout that you gave me?
Yes, so when we have patients come on-site to the testing center, they do receive an education packet, and that is one of the pieces that are, that's in there, as well as other resources, such as United Way. We do offer the explanation for and the ability to house them as well, with Steve's contact information in there as well. Okay.
All right, so we have a few pictures, graphs for you, that are very similar to last week that we presented, with some clarifications, as you can see on the left side of that graph, that Dory has put up some qualifications there. If you recall, Colleen has also mentioned that oftentimes, we have two to 300 tests out there that are pending at any given time. And so you'll see the data as a 5-8, and notice that the trend line, which is the dashed line, continues to, continues to go towards that upper right-hand sector there. Once again, as the pending comes in, we'll be able to post those, and then you'll continue to see that trend being renewed. For the tests that go out, we seem to be seeing approximately 50% or better coming back as positive at this point in time. Here's your positive rates. Once again, the same strategy, the same scenario, your positive rate, about 48, close to 50%. And we continue to see that moving. Once again, we have a lot of them pending, which, which, once those are received, we'll go ahead and get those updated, and you'll be able to see those trends as well.
Quick question, go back to that slide that you just, and this clarification.
Sure.
Last meeting, you used a number, 58%, then 56%, is the 48%, is that, is that the same criteria? I mean, did we go from 58 to 56 to 48? I'm just trying to get a handle on what 48% means.
So the statistics that I gave you were the previous two weeks after our last meeting, looking at just the case positivity rate for just that five-day period, that Monday through Friday.
Right.
As for the 48% positivity rate, is that overall, or was that the, just that time period?
That's what I'm trying to.
Is 48%?
Uh huh.
The 48% is based on the known results for the tests given the week of May 15.
Okay, the last week, okay, sure.
Yeah, just didn't have all of the results.
So we've gone from 58 to 56 to 48, and that's a, we're comparing apples to apples, am I correct?
Well, however, you still have that large number of pending.
I get that.
So we didn't receive, I believe we still have some from Friday and Saturday that we still need to record that are from that week's testing.
I think all of them that week's testing.
Yes.
But I think the number that was posted for the 15th was 225 pending, or 200 something pending.
We have several that are pending right now, and so that will fluctuate that 48% positivity rate, depending on what those results end up being.
Okay, thank you, I just need you to understand what I'm, yeah, thank you.
Colleen, before we leave this graph, one quick question. As I read that, it says there are two tests pending, and the date is 5-8 of 2020, that's 10 days ago. Are you still waiting on two tests from 10 days previous?
That's what it looks like, either that or there's an issue with the specimen, so I need to find them out.
Okay. Thank you. All right, this one here is your total tests. Out there, if you see the spike, let's see on the seventh, once again, this stops at the 8. So the dashed line, once again, reflects that trend, is a trend line, 14-day moving average. The solid orange line is your positives for those tests. So, once again, we're a week behind because of all the ones that are still out, the results still pending, over 200. Positive cases on a daily basis, once again, a week behind, just shown a little bit differently from the previous slide. And then the positive rate, based on a percentage. So as you can tell, once again, we're lagging in the test results because of the pending. And we should see quite a few of those back, actually, today and tomorrow. Traditionally, the, traditionally, Monday and Tuesday seems to be heavy with the results. And that's what always kind of skews that, the positive bumps during the week. And this graph ends almost three weeks ago. Actually, two weeks, yeah, two and a half weeks ago, approximately. I guess that's an issue I might have, I think there's four or five days worth of data, and you can see that we don't, I mean, we're looking at old data for decisions we make today. I think there's, granted, not all the last week's in, which we could have had it through Wednesday or something, the 13th, or something like that, that would give us five more days worth of data to analyze.
Well, we gave you the preliminary for the week ending the 15th, the preliminary was there. Do you go up on what hurts?
So you look on the left-hand side for the, past the 8. You look at additional 259 of the 690 tests were positives. 284 negative, with 148 pending. So that's why we present that additional information, to provide you the most up-to-date until we receive the pending results. Colleen, if I remember correctly, last week, you did have, as far as testing spikes, you did have a couple of days that were pretty close to 200, if I recall.
Yes, and if you'd like me to go ahead and proceed with.
Go ahead.
My report, I will talk about those high days as well, so. As we embark on our fifth week of the, fifth week at the testing site, currently recorded, Finney County has 1,234 confirmed cases of COVID-19, 1,276 negative cases, 222 pending cases, five deaths, and eight current hospitalizations. So this is the information that is on our finneycounty.org site. This past week, we had our record-breaking day on 5/11, with 204 patients scheduled for testing. Of those 204, we had our highest yet of 189 people tested, and on 5/12, we had our second-highest day of 182 patients tested. So again, 5/11, we had 204, which was our highest scheduled day. Of that, 204, 189 people were tested, and 5, on May 12, we had our second-highest of 182 patients tested. So that was just this past week in the amount and numbers that we were testing. To speak to some of the reports and other updates that are going on around the community, as you heard from Marilyn Douglas of how she's doing the medical surveillance of the patients in housing, this has been a tremendous undertaking, and we have been very appreciative of her much-needed support. As you heard from Dr. Swaddy reporting on Kearney County Hospital, so this past week, they visited several apartment complexes and offered COVID-19 testing and education. They did test a total of 53 patients over three days of screening. The vast majority were refugee families who work at Tyson. The majority were Somali, Burmese, Rohingya, Congolese, Aromo, Iridian, and a few Spanish-speaking patients. And then I have a quote from Erin Keely, who's a physician assistant at Kearney County, who offered this service and went to the communities. She said, "I really enjoyed the interaction with these patients, there was a very sweet sense of solidarity, solidarity and feeling seen and valued that they expressed to us. I think many of the people we tested would not have otherwise sought out testing or medical care, and/or would have continued to go to work. I'm really looking forward to following up with them and doing more education over telemedicine. It was fun to watch the young leaders with this minority community open doors for it and collaborate with us by explaining and promoting the screening to others." All in all, I think this was a very... All in all, I think this was a very positive and community building experience. Kearney County Hospital has served our community in a tremendous way and we cannot express enough gratitude to them for how they have supported the health department with this endeavor. We have also partnered with Genesis to screen and test employees or residents of nursing homes in the area. They have offered for staff to our testing site. We are also currently working on an MOU to move forward with utilizing the staff for this site. Genesis will be setting up also a mobile testing unit. There will be more to come on these developments. USD four five seven nurses are towards the tail end of being available for us. We've been able to utilize their nurses to support the site in a variety of roles. We have been extremely grateful for the hard work and dedication. We should be able to utilize these nurses for potentially this week and next week. Another report too on the National Guard. So we have had a total of eighteen Air National Guard and Army National Guard supporting for the testing, supporting our testing site. We have recent confirmation that they will have all eighteen of these members on site until the end of the month. About nine of these members' orders will discontinue. We will have the remaining ten staff through the first week of June. These are, of course, not concrete numbers and may fluctuate in the next few weeks. We've also been assured that if we have any additional needs, they are willing to potentially send more staff. Another update, as you all know, Memorial Day is a week from today. I would like to notify you all that we are going to close a testing site and call center that day. Our team is embarking on the fifth week of testing at the fairgrounds in an effort to honor our service members who have so faithfully partnered with us to serve our community. And honor those who have gone before us, we'd like our staff to have some rest with their families. Of course, we're grateful for the collaboration of different organizations, both state and local, to coordinate the testing site to serve Fannie County. With the assistance of National Guard, Emergency Management, Police Department, Highway Patrol, Fannie County Sheriff, Public Works, Fairgrounds, USD four five seven and other community partners, our operation would not be able to function.
Question, Colleen, you clarified one of them. I was wondering, would your Air National Guard support that? Sounds like they will reissue new state, new orders if you need more people to help you.
We may put in a request, yes, that may not be granted. But they did say that to feel free to communicate with with them of what our needs may be.
So you you don't have any target date when you think you'll end the drive through testing? Or do you have any idea?
Again, this is very unpredictable. It's going to be a week by week evaluation of our testing needs. I I think currently we could be pretty safe to say that we will have probably another one to two weeks at the minimum. Again, that all depends on how our surge potentially increases.
So mid-June, maybe, or?
Perhaps.
Perhaps, okay, thank you. Go on. Colleen, just a clarification. The Air National Guard, the service people who are who have been here and are here and will be here, those are only through our requests. So if we don't request something, they aren't here? Or does the state say you're a hotspot and we need to have these people there? How help me understand how that works a little bit?
This is a collaboration between, yes, this KDHE, Kansas Department of Emergency Management, Joint Task Joint Task Force, as well as National Guard. And so that communication needs to go through all of those avenues to put in the formal request for members.
And the second part of my question is, you you mentioned that they're helping, or maybe somebody said something about they're helping in plain clothes and at the one site or at least to one site. But help me understand a little bit better. What what are all the roles that they're playing, those nine to eighteen people who are here? Help me understand that a little bit better.
So the the roles of the National Guard staff are fulfilling at the testing site. We've had a variety. We've had some performing the nasopharyngeal swabs. We've had some helping with the data entry into our Epitrex Disease Investigation Site. We've had some RN level helping us with the hotline call center phone calls. We have several doing our contact trace, contact tracing and investigations. There are several roles and administrative within the call center. And so really, it's been fulfilling a variety of support roles for our staff.
And then my last question is not related to that. I was on our KAC board meeting, Zoom meeting the other day, and the House Director, who's on our board from Ringham County, referenced it and he says it's not the official title, but he calls it the Walmart testing. But the self-testing kits, those kinds of things, which he's very concerned about, that they're not giving good readings. You mentioned mobile units, it made me think of this today. Help me understand, are we concerned about that kind of thing happening within Fannie County that people are going and buying the test kit and testing themselves? And we're getting false positives or false negatives? Or are we pretty confident that they're going through legitimate testing procedures?
As far as I am aware, our Walmart here locally has not received those testing kits. I believe there's three sites. Scott County, Celine, and I don't recall the third one that have received those testing kits. As far as the legitimacy and accuracy, I'm not I'm not sure.
Well, this is Nick Baldetti, I'm talking to Nick, but he was expressing the concern about those and how they weren't as trustworthy as other sources. So I just wanted to run into that here. So thank you for that.
Sure.
One last thing, Colleen, as some of the the audience does not know, Dr. Burns is not able to be here today.
Would you like me to read that?
She has presented a written paper to the commission, Colleen, would you like to comment?
Sure, if I may read her her statement and then I would love to follow up with perhaps my recommendation as well, so that we can kind of.
Move forward.
Move forward, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so this is from Dr. Burns. She said, I am currently on hospital service and unable to present today, but have prepared the statement to serve as my analysis and recommendation to the commission and the residents of Fannie County. Our case positivity rate is incredibly high, indicating significant ongoing disease transmission in our community. A case positivity rate in the fifteen to twenty percent range is more indicative of a controlled outbreak. The only way to stop transmission is to separate and isolate the ill. The challenge with this virus and its insidious nature is that symptoms are often subclinical and so physical separation of people is necessary to stop transmission. Testing has proven to be more sensitive in those who are symptomatic, given the technical nature of this, say. However, I want to be clear, asymptomatic people do transmit this virus. KDHE Secretary Norman, on a last, on a call last week with myself, Mrs. Dries, Mr. Reese, Commissioner Dave Jones and Chairman Dries agreed that the COVID nineteen disease situation in Fannie County is severe, given the metrics that KDHE is following, which has prompted their directed resources and intense attention to our area. He stated that we are several weeks behind in our experience of the virus versus other counties in the state. It is important to consider the natural history of the disease as we assess the data. Consider that the peak time of hospitalization is later in the disease course, with onset five to seven days after symptoms occur and know that symptom onset is several days after infection. Deaths often occur long after that, especially if patients are hospitalized and receive supportive care for a time, but ultimately succumb. Therefore, in analysis of the data, please understand the number of deaths reported now likely reflects infections acquired three to four weeks ago. At that time, we had many fewer cases in Fannie County. If our goal is, if our goal, as I believe it should be, is to lessen transmission, thereby limiting morbidity and mortality in our community, it does not make sense to proceed with reopening at the same pace as other counties that have much less transmission. Further, to be consistent with the principle of physical distancing as our tool to prevent transmission, I recommend strict adherence to physical distancing inside establishment, which includes large stores or buildings and wearing coverings over the nose and mouth to prevent expelling droplets. To those who have suggested allowing ongoing transmission in our community, thereby pursuing natural herd immunity as a disease controlled strategy, I recommend against this, as in my opinion, the requisite human cost is too high. To explain, the concept of immunity means that the body's immune system has previously been exposed to the virus, has generated specific killer antibodies, and when infected again, can mount a response with those antibodies to kill the virus and stop transmission because the virus is not able to replicate within its host. This is the basis of vaccination. With a novel virus, the body's immune system cannot recognize an infection that it has not been exposed to, and so the body must weather the infection without defense. It is expected for those that survive and recover, they will develop effective immunity, although that is yet to be proven. For herd immunity to be achieved naturally, the number of immune people in the population must be above the transmission threshold. Right now, the transmission threshold is estimated at two to three. That means that the person infected with COVID nineteen infects two to three other people on average. Therefore, at a minimum, two to three of the entire population would need to survive infection and be be immune to meet the threshold. Estimates vary, but conservatively, according to global and national statistics, one percent of those infected die from the disease. That translates to a cost of hundreds of lives in our country. And even then, the virus is not eliminated, transmission still continues, just at a much lower rate. I believe, as is supported by epidemiologic principles and recommendations of respected public health authorities, that a better strategy is to control outbreaks by diminishing transmission, as has been demonstrated in other counties, areas of our nation and across the world, while awaiting vaccine availability. Vaccine-enabled herd immunity does not come at the cost of infection and is currently the technologic goal of our time. Medicine and science are racing to adapt to the virus. In that spirit, all of us are called to innovate and change our habits, our work, our methods of transportation and housing and commerce, education, and emerge into a new era. Physical distancing is difficult and goes against our human nature. And yet, each individual must act to protect their family, their friends and their neighbors. This is the nature of contagious disease. It is not an individual's choice as to risk to infect themselves, whether it's an individual's responsibility to choose not to harm someone else. I do believe that the people of our country, our state and our nation have the stamina and ingenuity to survive this crisis together. Lindsey Burns. And then I'd like to follow that up with my last piece. As for my recommendation for how we proceed, I believe we should evaluate the health metric data after we have a full two weeks of data for Phase One to analyze. I believe this data should be used to formulate how we've moved forward in the phases. We have one if the, if not the highest we have one of the, if not the highest positivity rate in the state. This should not be dismissed. We started last week with being the fourth highest number of positives in the state. On Friday, we were the second. If I were to speculate, I believe we would have the potential to have the highest caseload by the end of this week. I urge you, commissioners and local board of health, to make the decision of how we proceed on what our health metrics, increasing caseloads or positivity rates are exhibiting and not what the rest of the state or our surrounding counties are doing. We must evaluate our county separately. We are seeing a drastically different trend here than the rest of the state. My best recommendation would be to continue Phase One for an additional two weeks, continue to gather data concerning our positivity rate, hospitalizations, and also our number of COVID nineteen related deaths before considering opening to Phase one point five. Our discussion with Dr. Lee Norman with from KDHE on Thursday last week echoed this recommendation, as he suggested we remain in Phase One until we begin to see a decrease in our positivity rate.
All right. General, I'll open up the comments, questions. And then in five minutes, we're going to take a recess before we make any decisions. Dave.
This Dave with a handful of questions, perhaps a comment or two, Colleen. You cited a figure a bit ago that we had twelve hundred and thirty four positives. That would tend to imply to those that maybe are not informed that we have twelve hundred and thirty four people out here running around the community that are capable of spreading the illness. And you can verify that by the test, but that's not quite accurate. Some of those people out of that twelve hundred and thirty four have been through this cycle of the disease and are now recovered. Would that be a agreeable statement?
Some of those, yes, are recovered.
And so if we just simply look at those who who more than two weeks ago were were diagnosed as being positive and they have not passed away, then we can assume that they have they have recovered.
So.
My my figure is over nine hundred people out of those twelve hundred and thirty four are no longer presenters of a of a virus concern. Does that make any any sense from my current office base?
So I I understand the sentiment and and the wanting to communicate the recovery rate. I would say too, so we had Dr. Burns also coordinate with Dr. Lee Norman of KDHE, who KDHE is also not disseminating and or tracking recovery rates as well. The basis of that is is that we're finding that people will still test positive potentially months after recovering from COVID nineteen. And so because we aren't clinically confirming whether they are still positive or not several months later, we believe that saying a recovery rate that isn't clinically confirmed would not be accurate and due diligence on our part.
And I ask that question because I've had more than a handful of people contact me and ask, why can't we find out the recovery number? And and I've tried in one of that conversation, explained that that
Sure.
protocol would be the regardless of recovered is a couple or a couple tests and no symptoms for a period of time and so on.
And and we do have that explanation also on our fanniecounty.org site below the tables where we do report. So we do have on there the explanation of why we are not doing the recovery rate and and why we don't believe that this would be due diligence on our part, since we're not clinically confirming that they're recovered.
Then a kind of a general statement.
Sure.
One of the one of the facts that we faced in Fannie County is that we had no cases well after the time that in eastern Kansas, they had positive cases. And then all that, but we got shut down at the same time they did. And then we we anxiously sent here with thumbs twiddling, I guess is probably the wrong term, but then here came a positive. And I'll I'll remember precisely that day, we got the very first positive. Like gee, what's what's before us? We're now, as you said, second in the state in the number of positives. But the timeframe has gone by to where we have a number of businesses that are struggling to survive. And so as a commissioner, that's our tough question. Certainly, lives are important. I don't mean to downplay that at all. But also, there's some importance that we need to assign to keeping our economy going. So your your recommendation to us is, I'm assuming, without putting words in your mouth, is to stay exactly where we are with Phase One, is that correct? Or is it to backtrack and go back to something more more restrictive?
I would remain in Phase One so that we can continue to evaluate our health metrics that are coming in and are rapidly increasing or decreasing. But I think it would be due diligence on our part to evaluate the full two weeks of Phase One before proceeding.
And I appreciate your position and at this, as I read Phase one point five as presented by the governor, the only real change from where we are today in our Phase One is that it also allows hair salons and barber shops to open up on an appointment basis only. And then some, I'm going to use the term gyms, that's probably the wrong term, but those that are. that's probably the wrong term, but those that are associated with health to open. That's about the only difference between 1.5 and the one that we're in today. Is that agreeable?
Yes, sir.
So then is it appropriate for us to keep the hair salon closed when they're going to deal with folks on an appointment basis only and practice the social distancing of masks and so on? That's a tough question we have as commissioners. So I've stated my position.
Sure.
I'll listen for the consensus of the board.
Before we continue on, we're going to take a five-minute recess as I promised, so we will return 10:04. Reactive, don't you? 10:04. Break. We were going around the commission table, opinions, observations, questions. Who would like to be next?
Well, I'll give it a nod. Colleen, you said that when people have recovered, but they still test positive, does that mean they're still shedding the virus?
So KDHC has done some research on this. They are not necessarily infectious, but they are still, they still have viral COVID-19 within their bloodstream or their system.
So, but they're not actively shedding? You have to be asymptomatic to shed, is what I'm...
Yes, typically symptomatic to be spreading the virus. But again, that kind of depends on the person's immune system. And so that's why the quarantine period is the amount of time that it currently is.
Sure. So I don't want to scare my fellow commissioners, but as you probably observed, I selectively wore my mask up here today. And the reason is, I am presuming that all of these healthcare workers that are coming in here are carrying the virus and are asymptomatic. Though I realize you and Marilyn and others have protected yourselves, but even with protection, we're vulnerable. If two individuals do not have masks on and one of the people has the disease and is pointing this way at some shorter distance than I've been sitting, you have about a 70% chance of catching the virus. If I have the mask on, I reduce that to about 1 in 20 or 5%, and that's what I've chosen this morning when we've had people right in front of us. If both of us had masks on and we had several of the health providers and doctors come up with masks, it goes down to 1.5%. So I am all for opening up, but if we do open up, I just have to encourage our public to wear masks despite all of the controversy that's out there if you want to protect yourself or others. I agree with the positivity rate being very high. We have a large amount of testing compared to other cities. I was in Manhattan this weekend, there's been very little testing by comparison, and they are acting as if things are fairly normal there, and I do question that behavior. But in this county, I really question it, given our high positivity rate, as Colleen has pointed out. I gave you the statistics from seven or eight counties, and you can see where we are. Sweden has been pointed out as a model to follow to develop herd immunity. As of yesterday, Sweden is a miserable failure. They have 358 deaths per million, and I will compare them to us, compare them to other Scandinavian countries which have similar populations. Denmark, 93 per million, Finland, 53 per million, Norway, 44 per million. Just for comparison, the U.S. death rate is 267 per million, although we are over 90 million deaths. Even if you discount that because of misguided use of COVID to increase hospital reimbursement, if you took maybe a third off of that, we would have 60 million deaths in this country. But again, Sweden took an open approach to try to develop herd immunity, and they are a failure, I would say. We are concerned about our hospital being overwhelmed. I think we're very fortunate that it has not been, and I've seen some articles addressing, even specifically southwest Kansas, why is the death rate not higher here? Now, part of that is the lag, as we've heard this morning. I hope we don't see the 23 to 30 deaths I predict, we stay around single digits. But we have a young population getting infected. If you look at the numbers, and I do, by age, only 6% of people over 65 are showing these positive results, under nine years old, 3%, under 19, 9%. So most of it is in that young healthy population that is able to survive this. I talked to Scott Taylor this morning, six COVIDs at 7:00 a.m., two persons under observation, so eight, as we heard earlier, in minimal ICU need. So we've been very fortunate. I think it's the type of person being infected, although we still worry that it's going to get to other people in the households. I'm a little disappointed we haven't been able to make better use of our quarantining options, and I do understand there's some cultural reasons for that and a lack of trust. And I think Steve will address some of the outreach, because I do think those are invaluable. So I am all for opening up, and I would even say that we could go to 1.5 personally, because I've talked to a number of barbers and hairdressers, and they are well-prepared, they'll be masked, they'll have appointments, they'll keep people separated. But I do think that the public needs to be responsible and realize that we are literally swimming in this virus, and if you don't want to get it, you need to keep yourself safe. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Lon.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon. For those of you on the line, much of what Dr. Clifford said, I agree with. He and I would have some difference of opinions, some difference of opinion with regard to use of masks, but I respect his opinion with regard to the use of masks. I am one who's in favor of moving to the 1.5, even though the 1.5 concerns me from the state standpoint, because it adds to the confusion from the public standpoint and the business's standpoint. But I do believe that the barber shops and the salons are doing everything they can, and it's by appointment only. And I think the gyms are the...
Fitness centers, yes.
Fitness centers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you for that. The fitness centers, and we had other, we've heard from Chad on other occasions, and he was read into the record today, what the Y is doing and cleaning every 90 minutes, and they wouldn't allow people to shower there, take clothes there, and a few other things. I mean, they're doing everything they can to allow people to do that. And even with that, I'm not sure how many people will come out of their homes and take advantage of those services. Some people may choose to stay home, and I respect that. That's their choice. I'm all about choice. I think we need to, as Dr. Clifford has succinctly said today, we need to be aware of what this disease is, we need to be aware of what the virus is, but we cannot intrude any more on people's freedoms, freedom of choice. And the same way with the fitness centers. Our son tried to buy some fitness equipment and couldn't find any over in the Kansas City area. It attracted to Pega to find it because people have bought fitness equipment to take into their home. So I'm not sure, you know, how many people are going to come back to some of those fitness centers anyhow. I mean, you used the word earlier, Colleen, speculation, and it's speculation on my part. I understand that. But I am one that would be in favor of moving to 1.5, because as Commissioner Dave Jones said a little bit ago, it's really only a couple of changes from 1.0. My question is this, Mr. Chairman. Our motion last time was 1.0 to next Friday, I mean, excuse you, this Friday, the 22nd. And I don't recall on the 1.5, that was to start today, correct? And go for two weeks? Was it two weeks? Do you recall, Colleen?
Yes, sir. Until June 1st, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to recall what was said in that 1.5. So then if we did move to 1.5, Mr. Chairman, are we saying that that would start on the 23rd and go to June 1st? I'm having a little trouble with timelines and stuff depending on to help me determine what might be the proper move to.
I think that would be determined strictly on the way the motion came forward.
So that would be, if we did it that way and started the 23rd with 1.5 and went to June 1st, that'd be a week, correct? I don't have a calendar for that.
It would be, it'd be about nine days.
And then that way, then if we chose to, then we would coincide with the states going forward.
But the governor's original proposal on Phase Two at May 19.
Right.
I don't think the 1.5 changed that, correct?
Well, the 1.5 went into effect instead of 2.0.
Yes.
It's replaced 2.0. Okay. I mean, that's all my comments right now. I'm not ready to make a motion yet, because they might have other comments, and you probably have some comments, Mr. Chairman.
From my perspective, I guess I am very sensitive to the 48% that's still coming back as positive. I understand all sides of this quite well. The businesses that are struggling, gyms, barber shops, salons, but also see the other side of it. So I guess today I am officially undecided which side of the fence I'm going to fall on. So enough said.
Excuse me, I had one other question after. And June 1st is our next meeting, correct? Is that our next regular?
Scheduled, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mr. Chairman, since you have heard from everyone, I would move that, and for those on the line, I'm sorry, this is Lon. I would move that we enter Phase 1.5 on the 23rd of May until the 1st of June after 1.0 expires on the 22nd. 1.0 expires on the 22nd.
That is the motion. Before, I ask for a second. Clarify 1.5, which businesses you are going to open.
Well, the states 1.5 includes salons, barber shops, and fitness centers that were not before. It does not include theaters. I can't remember some of the other things. Bowling alleys are not included in 1.5. Bars are not included in 1.5, but it would include barber shops and salons and fitness centers.
The states starts today, right? Their 1.5 starts today.
That's the way I respect it.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for less than a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we stay in conjunction with the state. Go to 1.5 today with the state.
The motion is changing the start date to today for how long?
As long as the state stays at 1.5.
And we think right now, Colleen, that's, is it midnight of June 1st? Do you recall how that's working?
I believe it would sunset at 11:59 on the 31st.
On the 31st.
Yes, so.
I have a copy of it here if you'd like to read it.
Well, I just, yeah, I mean, I've seen it, but I just, I did bring it. Mr. Chairman, this is Lon. I would second that motion.
Okay, we do have a motion and second. Now discussion.
My only point is that, you know, I've listened to all the medical experts, and you and I were fortunate enough to tour one of our major employers in the county, and they're going to extreme measures. And I think they've convinced their employees that this is a very serious situation, and the way they're acting in their facility and how they treat their employees as it come and go. Hopefully, the words getting carried back to the family units that this is something not to be messed with. But I do believe that, you know, we have responsible business operators in the state or in the county that can take care of their businesses and run it profitably, I mean, appropriately. You know, it's, I've heard this several times over the weekend, that it's ironic that government tell you, you can't stay in business, yet we want your tax money so we can stay in business. And, you know, that's a, that's not, you know, that's a bad feeling to have as a small business operator.
Dave, with a comment, perhaps a question, Colleen. I, over the past couple of meetings, I've asked you about disease transmission statistics at Walmart or at Home Depot, and you said, as I recall, that you have no tracking, that they had five or more confirmed cases that you can, you can point to those stores as a source. Is that correct?
It's mostly that I don't have that data in front of me, and that's not something that I personally have analyzed. We have had Dr. Burns look at that to look at how many businesses do. However, that was before that last communication that you got on statistics from her.
My point, I guess, is I'm not convinced that the disease has been transmitted at the Walmart or the Home Depot store, but somewhere out in the community, there's some other underlying element that's causing all of this transmission that makes these rates continue to go up, up, and up. So I realize that some are identified as your community spread, so you have no idea where that came from, but a bunch of these, you probably have a pretty good idea of where that person contracted the source of infection, do you not?
I don't believe that it is a very easy thing to track, where everyone has gone, what they've touched, who they've been around, and who they've transmitted to. So I can't really specifically speak to who is getting it and where they're transmitting.
And I can appreciate that, but let me rephrase my point here.
Sure.
If we go to 1.5 today, do you see a great big jump in the number of positive cases as your test, like, the next week or 10 days?
I believe that there's going to be increased exposure, yes, and so I would expect that we could see an increase in positive cases.
Okay. So that's our consideration.
I wonder, and I don't know if the public realizes this, Dr. Clifford, we're always dealing with an information lag, and some of the data we saw here today was two weeks old, and I appreciate bringing in the 15th numbers, even though they may be tentative or preliminary. I thought we had a chance to come back here this Friday to reevaluate, so I'm a little hung up on that. It just seems like in the hotspot in the state, we hardly have a right to proceed. I'm sympathetic to the gyms and the barber shops. I have been negotiating for a haircut tomorrow, in fact. They can, we might fully open. So I just, I'm still a go-go-slow mentality. We've had medical advice here this morning that would suggest otherwise, or suggest a negative vote on this motion. So I wonder if there was any thought of being back here Friday to reevaluate with more
Just from a practical standpoint, I will not be available on Friday.
Mr. Chairman, Dave here. I'm wondering, along the lines of your general thinking, Dr. Clifford, if we don't, as a commission or Board of Health, whatever setting we're in, if we don't need to meet more frequently than every two weeks. So if it can't be Friday, how about next Monday?
Wednesday, Friday.
It's a holiday, but I'm saying, perhaps we need to be, in order to stay kind of up to date on the statistics, meeting a bit more frequently than every two weeks. Too much happens in between.
I'm available.
Lon.
I may even call for the question.
Was it, did you officially?
I will call for the question.
That's unfortunate.
Go ahead.
Still calling for the question?
Well, brother, western and ask, I'll hold on for a little bit.
Thank you. Just for clarity, you do have a joint public health order out there, joint between the Board of Health and your health officer. That would need to be rescinded, and then reissue another joint public health order between the Board of Health and the health officer. That's going to take a little bit of time to do, is what I'm getting at. I might be able to put that pull down altogether today, which would make, and the motion here is that this would be effective immediately.
Well, let's see if the motion passes first. We may be, then we can jump through the hoops, because it may not pass.
But I understand. I just want to, you know, kind of present what's at hand here to make all this happen.
We're in a state here of all kinds of staggered dates, and we need to get it sort of either in-line or in-state. We're off our own one way or the other, but there's too much confusion here about the dates.
And then to your concerns, is that quite often the state of Kansas, oftentimes either on a Wednesday or Thursday prior to theirs expiring, will issue a new order. My suggestion is that if we're going to meet and try and be in sync with the state in our considerations for Fiddy County, is that perhaps we look at meeting either that Thursday or Friday to discuss this, and as a Board of Health and health officer, to see where you're going, if you're wanting to get in sync with the state, if that's important. I'll just offer that as a suggestion.
That would be when?
June.
So you?
It would be June, probably the 4th or the 5th, June 4th or 5th. Because this one here begins the 18th, and it would expire then.
Well, basically, midnight the 31st, according to what Colleen just said.
Midnight 31st, okay, so we would be, excuse me, then we'd meet.
We'd meet the 1st, so.
Yeah, but if we, okay.
You want to go back?
So then you would, should know something, if the state, then the state is moving forward on the 28th or 29th.
Yeah, they should be making an announcement, I guess.
So if being in sync with the state is important.
We have really convoluted this discussion and motion, you're on.
Well, I was, you know, I just was trying to make it simple so we'd stay, you know, consistent with the state is my whole preface, the motion.
And as a chairman, I'm in an awkward position, because the question has been called. So since the question has been called, I am forced to ask for a vote. Can we restate the motion before we vote? Who wants to try to restate the motion? Larry, you wanted, you made the.
I just say that we'd be in conjunction with the state of Kansas on their 1.5 policy, and we'll start it as soon as physically possible with our, with our requirements as a county board of health. Now, that may mean tomorrow, but as soon as we get things signed and legal.
And the way that he restated it is what I would say.
For point of clarification, I want to know exactly what the state 1.5 is. Is it strictly gyms, fitness centers, barber shops, and salons, or does it include a 10-person limit?
A person limit is not changed. Here's your answer.
So it's all the same as Phase 1, so the 10-person limit, as well as social distancing, masks, all of that stayed the same. The only thing that changed was the ability for gyms, fitness centers, salons, and barber shops to open. They must maintain the same social distancing, masks, and precautions, and no group fitness classes for gyms or fitness centers.
Right.
If I recall that. So specifically, no group classes.
That's a good point of clarification.
So of the list, tattoos and sods, swimming pools, organized sports, that's still?
They're still closed. Bars are still closed, bowling alleys and theaters are still closed.
All those in favor of the motion signify the same eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Dave Clifford.
Four to one.
And I'd just like to state in casting a vote, I'm fully sympathetic with business. I only opened last week, 50% capacity. We're in the hotspot of the state, whether you like it or not, and I think I have to be driven by the medical data. I hope, I hope I'm wrong. Thank you.
We appreciate that, sir.
Hope you're right, too.
I told him that the other day. Phil, this is one time I hope you're right.
So, Mr. Chairman, you need a motion to.
Read it, me.
Well, you'll convene as the kind of commission, but in essence, from this, from this form right now, is that you've jointly agreed to move into 1.5.
Effective.
As soon as I can get the order crafted, which will hopefully be by the end of the day, and I get your signature, and the public health officers signature.
So I need a part of that motion. Chairman can sign that order? Sign with me.
Include that as part of that motion, that the chairman has the authority to sign the order.
Anything further from any kind of Board of Health?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. I appreciate Dr. Clifford's position, and I respect his medical background. The statement consistently from Dr. Clifford's been, let's be data-driven, and I agree with that. Our problem is we deal with two-week-old data, and so if we're going to look for this downhill turn in positives, that's not going to happen anytime soon because of the folks that were tested. So to me, we're fighting kind of a battle going two directions without appropriate data to make a decision. But again, I appreciate your position, and so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please make a suggestion. Even though I know it would be just a couple of days apart, I would like to suggest that we meet the morning of Friday, May 29th, because the governor's announcement as far as extending 1.5 or 2.0 and plus, it gives, we should have some additional data from our local folks. But that would be the day or two before the expiration of 1.5, because the day that we meet on June 1st is the day after expiration of 1.5, as it's put out there currently. So just throwing that out as a suggestion, that we do that on that Friday morning. Hopefully, the announcements would be made Wednesday or Thursday from the state's standpoint to give another couple of weeks for our local folks to get data together. So I'm throwing that out as a suggestion.
No, Mr. Chairman. If it doesn't get revealed.
And I'm sure we're getting paid by the meetings of, no, my, oh, we're still getting recorded, that's what I.
We still do have one.
One issue.
Yeah, one issue. Let's take care of that.
Correct.
At this point, it's a little kind of late in the meeting, but we do need to have two people officially appointed to their positions, taken oath of office. I'll ask our clerk to give an oath of office to Colleen as health partner.
Do you have resolution?
Resolution, pre-resolution, 10-2020, as Clifford moves.
Second, we do approve resolution 10-2020. Don't need to read that, folks. Can you see them? For public purposes, you're probably better read. Whereas pursuant to KSA 2065-201 and any revisions thereof, the Fiddy County Commissioners act as the Board of Health of Fiddy County, Kansas. Said Board is empowered to appoint a person licensed to practice medicine and surgery, preference being given to persons who have training in public health, who shall serve in advisory capacity to the County Board of Health, and as a local health officer. And whereas Colleen Grease, MVA, employed at Fiddy County as the Public Health Director as of October 17th of 2016, has the necessary education and professional qualifications for appointing as a local health officer. Now therefore being resolved, Board of County Commission of Fiddy County, Kansas, that pursuant to KSA 2065-201, Colleen Grease is appointed and shall act as a local health officer serving at the pleasure of the commission. And further that, I cannot say, Denala Portegius are in, employed by the Fiddy County as the Public Health Nurse, shall be named as Deputy Health Officer and shall act in Grease's absence where necessary, adopted this 18th, day of May 2020, Board of County Commission. All in favor of that resolution, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Commissioner, on the second one, uh, that's something that we can pick up on, uh, June one. I haven't finished that document yet.
Okay.
Can I clarify about the first and the second on that motion, on that resolution?
Clifford did.
You were the second.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Did I do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
That's all right.
Double, double, double approval.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the health discussion, I would, uh, that we reconvene as a county commission.
All those in favor of reconvene as city county commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. County Administrator report.
Okay, uh, a couple of items for today. I know that I was requested to go through our budgeting, budgeting process that we're, uh, working on. Uh, and then in addition to that, I asked Tricia to come up and, uh, talk a little bit about, um, your tax receipts and so forth. A few of you have asked about that as well. So she can provide a brief update on, on where their office is at on that. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, um, property tax, um, collection, the, um, second, um, half was due by May eleventh as the tenth fell on a weekend before interest began accruing. So as of today, we are at a ninety one percent collection rate. So, um, we are actually not far off from where we have been in past years and also not far off from where other counties are. There are a couple that are over us, there are a couple that are under us, but we are right on point, um, and we're also right on point with previous years. So, um, just, just from this information, property tax collections haven't taken in a significant hit so far from, um, the COVID nineteen situation.
There were some questions on our KLPG call about, um, oil and gas questions.
Sure. So our oil and gas collections are really right around, so we're at a ninety, um, it looks like we're at actually a ninety two percent correction rate on gas and, um, a ninety four percent on oil.
And that's, that's going to be on the eighteen dollar a barrel?
Yeah. Well, that, that's from last year. So keep in mind that these collections are for twenty nineteen tax year rather than twenty twenty. Twenty twenty's tax share hasn't, um, hasn't, we have, don't have bills for those yet, so. Any other questions?
Well, I, I had some comments, but I'm going to make them in my report because it, it talks about the KAC.
Sure.
Not specific to our county.
Sure, sure. And I just, and I want to make you all aware, so the legislature has, um, moved out of committee and it will be, um, presented in the full Kansas Senate. Um, a bill, um, that addresses property tax relief, um, and that talks a lot about moving deadlines and also forgiving interest, so we're actively watching that. Um, and our county will act appropriately if or when that passes.
Were you on the call when they brought the treasurers in the other day?
No, I was not, however, um, the, sure, so the collection rates I actually got are the information that are, that was presented by other treasurers within the state, so, um, the, the position of the treasurers is that, um, the deadline probably doesn't need to be moved as we've already passed, and my personal position is, you know, it might be a good idea to consider putting into statute, uh, something that allows treasurers to waive interest when there is a situation where a disaster is declared so that we don't have to wait for retroactive, um, action by the, the leadership of the, of the, um, Kansas legislature.
Dave? I have a question perhaps for you or for our county administrator, he's sidetracked here for a minute. But my, I'll pose a question to you. Have you folks looked ahead at unlocking the front door of behind customers into your office?
Yeah, so we have, um, worked on our plan, um, so our plan will involve limiting the number of customers, limiting the number of windows that were open so that we can appropriately social distance and making sure those, those windows are open consistently. Um, we are also having those windows modified so that we can keep the glass closed and just pass documents underneath, um, a, a small cutout. Um, we also have, um, I'll, I'll speak to this, we, we do have our digital line system ready to go so that people can get in line before they actually come to our office, so we will be deploying that along with when our building reopens so that hopefully we can reduce the number of people in our office as much as possible. We will still continue to encourage citizens to go ahead and, uh, use the means that they are now, so drop off your title work, we're going to have, um, more than one Dropbox available once we have our lobby open. We're going to continue to encourage people to, um, utilize the web tag renewal so that, um, so that that is just a quick, easy process. They don't have to come into our office. Um, also utilize the phones, so, um, we're going to, like I said, continue to encourage people to, to not come in. I don't want to say not come in, but we're going to encourage to continue with distance, yeah. Exactly. So, um, but we are taking this very seriously, but we are unfortunately going to have to limit the number of customers allowed in our office at a time.
And I saw in our packet, uh, some information about the new windows.
Yes.
When are those going to be installed or have they been?
They have not been, we're just waiting for them to come and fit those in.
So at this point, we cannot announce to the public when you're going to unlock the front doors.
E- exactly, that's something we have to wait until, until our office is ready, um, not just, you know, as a public health standpoint, but also equipment.
Alright, thank you.
To give, uh, appointment, is that by app only or by phone as well?
It will be by app and it will be by the website. We can also enter people, an appointment in via phone. Um, they can call in and we can add them to the line. Yeah.
Where in the phone book are you listed? Cause you're not under Fiddy County.
Well, I'm happy to provide that information. So if you call the Fiddy County main line, there is a call tree that will come to our office. Also, I will say, um, if, if you have any questions, go ahead and call six two zero two seven two three five two seven. If you would like motor vehicle, the option is option two for motor vehicle or option four for property tax.
Alright. Further questions for Tricia?
And actually, we are, uh, we are closing, buildings are closed through, um, June one. And we anticipate trying to get everything retrofitted. Some of the offices are already retrofitted uh, in anticipation for opening. Um, I know Tricia, that you've been working a little bit with Ford County because they've, um, ran into some obstacles when they reopened.
Yes, yes. Um, Ford County did run into some obstacles when they reopened and we may end up having to assist a little bit with that. Um, we'll see, we'll see what happens. It's still a very fluid situation.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one more question, comment. Uh, I had several calls or complaints that our Dropbox was overflowing and.
Sure, so we are actually checking that about once an hour. What we found is, um, we have people putting plates or very large envelopes in there. So we are checking. We are checking, but it is a small Dropbox. In the future, I would definitely like to explore getting a bigger Dropbox, but for now it's what we have, but that's part of, part of our problem, yeah.
Okay, I will tell them it's the chairman's problem.
I, I tidied up for a while, guys, I apologize.
And I had that same question asked of me a couple times, that it couldn't get to the Dropbox.
Yeah, we are, we are checking that very, very frequently.
Wadded up really well.
Always. How you do that?
Alright, Tricia, any, any other que, pertinent questions to Tricia?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Robert, would you continue on or the budget lesson, how I do this?
Um, as, as I may be aware, we've, uh, met with, um, really only about one of the outside agencies. Uh, so that for the most part is completed and, uh, there will be, beginning to be scheduled for the June one meeting, if I remember correctly, I'm looking at the word just to confirm that I'm correct in that, that we're, we're shooting, okay? Yes, we're shooting for June, for June one.
Sitting there with me.
Additionally, then we, we get a process of meeting with the, uh, internal departments and going through that process of reviewing their budget. Uh, up there on the, uh, silver screen, we, uh, do have the format that we're, uh, that we're utilizing. Uh, this is the same, virtually the same format that I had used for about the last twenty five years. Uh, what it allows us to do then is to, um, as you can see, you, you, you have your actuals for nineteen uh, your current budget is twenty and then your proposed budget is twenty one. And additionally then I, um, require that they, they provide a five-year budget, uh, look forward. That allows us to do some strategic planning and allowing for us to, um, not, um, well, to, to just plan a little bit better for any types of, um, increases or obstacles that we may, uh, see. So, so I have them plan out their equipment needs and I have them, and their personnel needs. If you recall, when we did our, our inventory process, one of the key components for inventory is to, uh, go through your systematic replacement of equipment, machinery and equipment as well as, uh, building improvements. And so this allows us then to, um, to plan additionally for that. What you'll, what you'll notice then is that, uh, even though, um, a department may not be purchasing an item, a capital item in the current year, we are allowing for that, just as, just as if you're doing accrual accounting, if you understand that, where you're allowing for its replacement. And so we'll be providing, um, so if a vehicle is, is going to last for five years and it's twenty five thousand dollars, we'll set aside in this example, five thousand dollars a year so that when we're ready to purchase it, the money is there and it's not a hit at one time to the budget. Once again, this is something that I've used for the last twenty five years. What this allows us to do then is to begin a process of building, um, your contingency funds, your reserve funds so that, uh, if in the event, then you, uh, have a need for funding for, let's say, a farm and road, for that improvement, where you're, um, have anticipated, uh, shortfall of approximately five hundred thousand dollars. This allows us to go ahead and absorb those types of things without, without struggling or altering any type of operational budgeting process in the current year. As, as in, in our fiscal, uh, committee, as I've told them, is that this, before you start really seeing the fruits of, of this process, it'll be about three years and then you'll start recognizing that, that, um, your, your planning and your reserves are starting to, um, really, really pan out for you. So, so you're not behind in your computer systems, you're not behind in your, um, machinery equipment as it relates to public works or perhaps even the abrasers office where they utilize vehicles and to do their, their job as well. There's been discussions about the update to, to the system within this office itself for speakers and so forth. So it's planning for those types of things and we're getting it on the budget for, um, this current year and with anticipation of, I don't know, five years out, for example, that will replace that. So you'll start to see that little incremental portion of that and, and your capital outline item within your budget.
What about, I'm going to use major points, for example, are they separated out like parking lots or redoing, um, law enforcement centers?
Absolutely.
Is that, is that separate or is that under needs?
No, a- actually, actually those are, those are identified with, within those departments that they would, uh, would apply for. So for example, under your buildings and ground or with a building maintenance, then there would be those types of line items where you would systematically then start putting away money for that in, in the fund that was created for that, and you do have a fund for that. It's, it, uh, is your, your CIP fund. And it's created over your budgetary, like your statutory authority of, uh, nineteen one twenty. And that's where the money that will reside in to pay for those types of things. Additionally then, you have, um, the county does not currently have an equipment reserve fund, but that statutory authority is under nineteen dash one one nine. It will recreate that and then each department in essence that will have their replacement portion within the departmental of that, of that fund. So it is, is very, um, very detailed on a departmental level so that they can continue on and operate without, um, vying for, um, attention for, um, you know, for major projects. Because right now you have a CIP process where you have a six million dollar, uh, update to the building across the street competing against somebody who may need, um, computer equipment. So those two things, you know, you, you'll have a difficult time doing that type of stuff because it just doesn't, well, it just, you, you're not planning for both, and this is a way for, for doing that.
So, Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, just a clarification. So when you say CIP process, is this, are you suggesting that this new budget or revised budget process would do away with the CIP process and incorporate it in the overall budgeting?
No, I, I'm just. Yes, for this, the, your current CIP process will change a little bit in that we're now starting to systematically put monies assigned for it. Uh, as opposed to buying for, if we chose that two point four million dollar, if you recall, when we said that was kind of the magical number for CIP projects this year. And, and so you'll actually be able to identify exactly what they are, so each department and division will, will list out those, those CIP projects.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. And then my comment is this, so you're saying to us that we won't have a forty year old computer system issue like we do today?
I, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I, yeah, I digress.
So anyway, you'll, you'll see a lot of that, and the other thing that you'll notice in this year's budget once we start to bring it, and, and we'll bring you a full budget document for your beginning to review, so you'll get a, a full glimpse of what that, of what that, uh, your budget is. And, and you'll see, um, it's taken us a while to do the research and look at, uh, the expenditures uh, as where they're coming from and what they're actually for, and so this, this budget will reflect where you're actually occurring the costs. And, and, and as opposed to maybe pulling it out of, uh, administrative general or whatever the case may be, it's a consistent expenditure that, that at least I've been able to find. And if it's, for example, it's out of, um, the county administrator's budget, yet it's being paid out of somewhere else, well, that needs to re, re reside in that, in that as well, because it's an actual expenditure, it's consistent, it's predictable, and your audit then doesn't reflect that change, and that's one of the things that, if you recall in your audits, from what I've been able to, uh, see, is that they propose a lot of adjustments because the expenditure is coming from somewhere else, but yet belongs over here, generally, and so, and so we're trying to clean that process up, and that's another reason why it'll probably take about three years before you finally see some of that consistency that come about.
And Mr. Chairman, just a quick follow up, so are you in discussion with our accountants as you go through this, or are they on board with the changes that you're making? Or have you gotten to that point yet?
We haven't quite gotten to that point, but we're utilizing the information that they have in order to, to do that.
My question, Robert, is, uh, a department, before they start setting aside funds for a certain project, will that project get approved by either you or us, or how's that?
It'll be, it'll be proposed by us, you'll see a listing of that project. If during the budgeting process, you don't see a need for that project. If during the budgeting process, you don't see a need for that project, well, then it's the board's decision to go ahead and pull that out.
Okay.
And you can either reappropriate those funds for some other project that you may determine, or eliminate it completely. However, you want to do that. But it's, it is, at that point in time, is the best recommendation that we could make then for the board for their consideration.
Okay. Other questions? All right, moving on. Next topic, Robert, if you might have.
That's it.
You're done?
Everybody else is talking about your COVID-19. And so that consumes, that consumes a lot of time.
So can I ask you one question real quick?
Yes, sir.
On the water well, the LEC, what all did they do? Or what, how expensive was that little process?
I don't recall what Roger had told me on that thing. It was, seems like it was somewhere around $50,000, if I remember correctly.
And that's just for the HVAC or the cooling system? Cooling, heating, cooling system?
Well, that and your water source there as well.
Well, no, I don't think it's used for water source.
Which one, I'm sorry, are you talking about across the street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was for water source, if I remember correctly. They're on city water.
They're on city water. So it's got to be for just, I think that's the heating and cooling system.
City water.
I think that well, one of them pumped water up and threw the system, and another took the water back down and dropped. That was part of the.
For your geothermal?
Yeah.
Yes.
Their better terminology.
But, so yes, you have, yeah, you do have, it was for about there.
$50,000, that's it?
Yeah.
That, well, that concept was designed about 40 years ago. So technology has changed, changed a little bit since.
Hey, looks like we're ready for board reports then. Start with Barry, if you can.
The only thing, I listened, I was on the KLPG call and the local legislators' call. Probably didn't pay as much attention, sorry, on the local one because they were sidetracked, it seemed like. But on Senate Bill 29, 294, that's the one where they're going to repeal the property tax lid, except they're going to, I don't know what's going to be worse, the sticker, the carrot in this deal. You know, as bad as the property tax lid is, the carrot they're offering may be worse than the stick. So I guess, does anybody have an opinion on where that's going? Or what are local folks are going to do? I didn't hear much discussion about that Saturday on their call.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add on to that. SB or Senate Bill 294 is being lumped in with two other bills into, in both the House and the Senate, to try to get quick passage on May 21st when they come back for the one-day session. KAC is still opposed to Senate Bill 294 because of the notifications, the cost to the counties and so forth. And from a pure financial standpoint, it appears that the replacement of the tax lid would be more costly than what we're facing with the tax lid. So, yeah, they put that carrot out there thinking that all counties would buy in. KAC is still opposed to that. The other, I can't remember the third one, I forgot to bring that with me. The second bill in there that is the one about paying taxes or penalties and so forth and moving the date for paying property tax. And then there's a third one, and I can't remember what that is. But both in the House and the Senate committees, they've combined 294 with these others. And so it is something that will be discussed on the 21st.
So it may, in likelihood, pass just because of the waivers being in.
Because of the other stuff, yes, it is possible.
So we sure need to be in touch with our local legislators about the cost of this notification part of this bill, what it's going to cost us.
And KAC has that data.
That cost will get passed on to the taxing entity that is going over their revenue neutral value. So we would be able to pass cost along, both labor and material for notifications required to know.
But it's constant, they do not have now.
So each individual, in each district's, the.
Well, there's certain criteria that has to meet that revenue neutral. I think it's most of our districts, probably.
Except for schools.
Except for schools, correct.
That is true.
So if the city were to go over, then the city would be responsible for paying. So I would assume that there's several entities that are going to go over. That cost would probably have to be allocated. So just all the notices would go out on one notice. But that cost then would have to be allocated amongst those districts, I would assume, based on the number of taxpayers or something.
You say going over, I'm not going over their cap or what's the.
Their revenue neutral value.
Right, the, what's being proposed instead of the, your current levy limit that you have is a revenue tax.
If you spend a dollar more than you did last year, you got a bailout.
Actually, if you generate, if you're levying for more, then you do that.
So if the mill levy, if we raise the mill levy, we're in notification mode?
No, it has to do with the amount of revenue you're generating. So if your mill levy would happen to increase, if your assessed valuation decreased then your, then your mill levy would increase to generate the same amount of revenue. And if you increase the amount of revenue then, I can't remember if there's an inflation factor on that or not.
I think there's several adjustments to get to that revenue neutral rate.
Not as many as there are now, but there is one for inflation factor. Then, then you're setting for the notification. And for the county, that's countywide, and I have no idea, what's that, $50,000, $60,000 to?
Well, it's not just the financial cost, but the time cost.
And then they have to pay the clerk back prior to the end of the year.
Yes, yes, there's a 1231 deadline for reimbursement of those costs for notifications from the taxing entities. Of course, if we decide to raise, then of course, that's our cost.
Correct, but you'd be floating it potentially for five months, four, five months.
And I would note that all that happens during, when early levy starts.
Joy, joy, joy.
I took note of those dates.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, for Dr. Clifford, I appreciate the response to the Garden City Fire Department to a large fire at a home in Southland Saturday night. It was, it was a dangerous situation, flames easily 30 to 40 feet high and ammunition going off with several explosive events. So there was no loss of life and the structure was saved, although I guess that's to be determined by insurance. But I thought it was fairly well handled. Multiple citizen calls, again, regarding our discussion earlier. Most in favor of going slow with some strident exceptions. I talked to several state representatives throughout the first district just to get a sense of their feelings about the opening up of the state. Most are in areas where they don't have the numbers of cases that we have. And they're certainly looking forward to opening inspiring their local economies. I attended the state Republican Party meeting via Zoom. One of both of them are elected as alternate delegates to the National Convention, NAMDA Convention in Charlotte, if it occurs in late August. And, yeah, I was interviewed by the Manhattan Mercury also. I was up at K-State for my son's graduation, such as it was. It wasn't even virtual, it was, didn't exist. Pay your fees and get out of here. So that's all I have, thank you.
My meeting, the main one that I attended was the Fair Board. At that point in time, the board unanimously voted that there will be a judging for the 4-H youth for their projects. That does not necessarily mean there will be a exhibit of those projects. It may strictly be that individual youth and their parents or whatever, what they judge. But the entries will be judged, but it really depends upon where we are at the pandemic, whether it is actually called a fair as we know it. So everything is kind of on the go to the June meeting to see where the state is, where we are. Again, whether they actually have a fair, but the youth will have their projects judged one way or the other. I did miss the extension meeting, I was out of town, but it's my understanding that Robert and Roger are working on an agreement for the building facility for the extension district. And I do not know, how are you coming along with that, sir?
I think Roger is identifying the geographic area of how much acreage is sold.
Correct, he didn't want to do a survey, but trying to come up with some.
And Kristen is supposed to be working on the, I guess it's a sale, sale of the building, but not of the land, with us retaining the land.
Exactly.
And then we'll also need to, I think there was a discussion about the agreement for maintenance of the, not the facility, but the grounds and so forth.
Excellent. And coming up coming, we had a great planning development meeting Thursday, and I'm sure that's going to be a long one.
Well, a handful of my meetings have been either canceled or Zoomed or Skyped. The library award meeting, which would have happened tonight, has been canceled. And we'll attempt to meet in some fashion next month. Kind of the same with the Fannie County Committee on Aging. I did, I did attend, as we mentioned already, a phone call forum. The commission chairman and I, it was a Friday, I guess.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm losing track of days, I'm sorry. On the phone to Dr. Lee Norman with the state, it was interesting to have their perspective. I've already mentioned kind of a handful of calls. But one of them, I want to mention, I was contacted by a dentist, the Kansas Dental Association or the Dental whatever licensing board, had indicated to them that through Kansas Division of Emergency Management, personal protective equipment would be available through the local emergency management office. And so Dr. Colmore's called me about that. So I called Robert, and it seems as though there was some misinformation received by the state. But thanks to our, the local emergency manager and his able-bodied assistant, they got in the middle and somehow they've come up with a system to help our local dentist get personal protective equipment, even though KDM is not financing, is that correct, Robert?
That's correct.
All right, so good work on the part of our local emergency managers. Now I have about three quick questions. Which Friday are we talking about having our next meeting? There are two Fridays between now and our regularly scheduled meeting.
29th.
My estimate is the 29th.
29th, and then at what time? Is it at 8:30 or is it some other time?
Let's call on our chairman, I think.
I'm calling on our chairman, what's the time, so.
I'm an early riser, but for you.
Yeah, but you farmers, you get up and go do whatever.
We can do 8:30, Dave, just for you.
Appreciate that. I see in some notes here, Mr. County Administrator, we have some new doors on the front that are automatic opening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
When are we going to get a tour of those and see them automatically open?
First, June 1st would be the grand.
Somewhat kidding, but I do see that those are installed and they've not yet been put to use. And then my final.
You didn't want to wear about.
Right, final thing, seeing Roger Conkens' notes about ceiling and so on, the cost of ceiling in the parking lot at the senior center is $6,750. That's about 10% of what we originally thought it's going to be. And Robert tells me they're working on some way to come up with some funding, is that correct? Or do we have to find some funding or we?
Right, we'll, from what I understand is that Roger talked to the contractor that was doing that work out on our roads, and so we were, just took advantage of that pricing. It's a little bit higher, a little bit higher than the rate that you're getting out there on the road, but just because of mobilization and the.
But they're going to take care of it, if somebody's found the funding to pay for it?
Yeah, just for that, yeah, six or $7,000, as opposed to doing, you know, a complete renovation. If we can buy a few years out of it like that, we'll maybe.
The senior citizens utilizing that facility are appreciative, I'm sure. So thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
What?
Well, I've had several meetings, but the one most notable was the KAC board meeting last Friday. And I did forget to bring some of that legislative thing, stuff with me. It's still laying on my desk where I had the Zoom meeting, unfortunately. But the KAC is actively trying to gather information. And I think a second notice came out the other day for reimbursable expenses due to COVID. Some of the counties are taking advantage of FEMA funds and so forth, and they're trying to sort that out. But they've got a great program there at KAC where they're trying to compile that for all 105 counties and trying to figure out, because right now, the total they had submitted to them at this point was already over $2 million. And ours was not submitted yet, which is not a problem. And they're not upset with us not having our numbers in yet. But even with numbers like ours, they were well over $2 million. And I don't remember what percentage of counties had responded. So, and then a lot of it was spent on the legislative stuff. So again, May 21st, I don't know how they're going to get done, what they think they're going to do, but they're not going to be, they're going to have more than an eight-hour day on May 21st. And what worries me, we all know what happens at 3:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the morning when decisions are made and there's no hearings. We ran into that with the tax lid issue a few years ago. But, you know, that's troublesome to me personally, as a resident of Kansas, trying to rush through some of this stuff. But hopefully, there'll be enough committee work done that they'll get through that. I had a call from a different dentist, and I relayed that to Robert with regard to the PPE. I've also heard, again, from a couple of contractors who said, get ready, that Danny Barker project's going to be higher than you anticipated. And I think you said the bid opening for that is May 21st, correct? If I'm not mistaken. I've also had questions about the Wildwood Park. And so I was glad to give that internal report where they've stopped it and it's, they're trying to figure out when to open it and so forth. But there are people who are ready for Wildwood Park and have been asking me about that. And then, let's see, the other couple of things are just simply personal. I had another cousin reunion with people from New Jersey, California, Tennessee, and our cousin in Sweden was on the call yesterday, Tomas. And that's my mother's home country is Sweden. But again, all kind of talking about their experiences through this. And he's getting along well in Sweden, he said. And then lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't report my death count in the last, in the eight weeks. And it's up by two since we last met. Longtime good friend from college and a client with the most recent non-COVID deaths in my little circle, so I'm up to 16 in eight weeks, so.
And I'm not in your circle.
I, yeah, I don't want to commit a mistake, no. But anyhow, it's been kind of a sad time around the last couple months that are not related to COVID. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that opportunity to share.
That was a record, sir. Three minutes and 37 seconds.
Well, yeah, the water took some of my.
Heard the things from the fourth county commission today.
One more thing. I guess I'd be remiss not to mention that you and I both went through the Tyson plans Tuesday, which was amazing. And if you get the opportunity to do that, Tony Lang is doing a wonderful job. His team out there has really stepped up to the plate. It's amazing what they go through to keep their employees. what they go through to keep their employees safe. And the amount of employees that go through that facility, it's, it's pretty awesome. And I would encourage anybody that gets the opportunity to take the tour, do it.
Mr. Chairman.
I would echo that comment. I do not think anybody catches COVID-19 at the plant, being all the sanitary disinfectant that's running through that thing. But.
I do have one, one issue that is pertinent to our group. But before I, before I say that, I had a owner of several feed yards stop in, he's from in Boria, but he stopped in. And he said the national beef issue in Ford County was actually, he started at a 15-year-old's birthday party. And the kids became infected and the kids went home and infected the workers and they took it into the plant. So to me, you know, some of these things that are saying, while they're coming out of these plants, they may ultimately come from the plant, but they didn't necessarily start this.
Start their.
Now, the, the thing that is pertinent, I, I didn't have it written down and I forgot about this. There was reference, I think, somewhere in this material today. Towns River View is under a boil advisory and have been for a couple of weeks. Don't know when KDHE is gonna release that. It's mostly caused in the mobile home area, Towns River View South, due to water pressure being less than 20 PSI. KDHE requires 20 PSI to circulate to keep bacterial infection, our, our bacterial stuff out of the water. We are, and matter of fact, one of my, one of my texts that just came in now is, I've got a call from KDHE to be talking to, but we're trying to, there's short-term solution, long-term solution, long-term solution. Our water supplier is not willing to do right now. Short-term solution, Centura Health is taking water to some of those folks and offering some other assistance. But just know that if you get calls about that, we are on top of trying to solve it. But there is a water supply issue for Towns River View. So, thank you. I'm sorry. Now I'm not, I'm over five minutes now.
Six minutes and 33 seconds.
That was what I did need to say to you.
Meeting's adjourned.